I was. All right, sorry about that. All right, let's, A, call the meeting to order. Pledge of Allegiance, Councilmember Lawson.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Larky?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Here.
Councilmember Thompson?
Here.
Councilmember Davidson?
Here.
Councilmember Pryon?
Here.
Councilmember Lawson?
Here.
Councilmember Richardson?
Here.
Councilmember McCallum?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
We have a, we have a quorum. Dee, personal appearance is one, Michelle Mellinger.
Hello. Good evening to the mayor and city council and community members. As many of you know, my name's Michelle Mellinger and I live at 704 Main Street. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. As you know, I'm the co-owner of three additional properties here on Main Street that are located at 414, 410, and 408. I'm here because the second reading for 410 is on tonight's agenda and I wanted to clarify some points. At the last meeting, I was unprepared for the tone of questioning and felt belittled, which made me unable to speak clearly. I want to record the facts. We do have a finalized 353 on 414 Main Street. That got brought up last meeting. All work has been completed. On June 30th, I met in person with Matt, Mike, and Joe about code items at our properties. Those issues were corrected promptly. At that meeting, we spoke about the 353 program and I accepted full responsibility for applying and handling it since my husband is banned from participating. Joe, Matt, and Mike asked me to keep them updated as to the timeline and I agreed. On June 21st, I applied for my Belton business license and received it on June 23rd as a general contractor. Yes, I'm the general contractor. This step saved us at least $100,000. We had bids on this roof project in excess of more than $150,000. We subbed out the work with a reputable roofer and ordered the materials through a commercial roofing supplier. So yes, I am the general contractor. I handled it all. I submitted both applications on July 21st and the start date on both applications was listed as August 1st. Then, per their timeline request, I updated the start date to August 15th, which was when work began. At no point after submitting these applications was I ever informed by anyone that the August 15th start date was not feasible. The appli, the applications were turned in and no one ever told me that was not going to work. Both roofs were in dire condition. We acted to repair them and I followed the instructions I received from city staff. I did not prioritize one roof over the other. I don't know where that came from. August 15th was always the start date for both projects. And no mention of who the tenants are was ever made by myself or my husband to move along the approval process. To this day, I don't know where that came from. I also do not, do not know why members of this council know about other issues we are dealing with at this property when this issue has nothing to do with the city and has never brought before, been brought before council or the 353 board. It seems our business is being discussed when it should not be. While filling out these applications, I checked the city's website for more information about the 353 program as instructed. According to the city's own website, the Old Town Redevelopment Board meets bi-weekly or as needed, not just once a month as I was told at the last meeting. And yes, I did ask for a double read, but I was unaware I'd be publicly shamed for it. I was simply asking for the same treatment others had, had received. I did not ask for anything extra, just the same thing that was granted to them. Our situation was just becoming more dire by the day and there were other people to consider besides ourselves. If I would have been told that this would not have been approved, we would have pushed back the project date despite the 15-plus inches we have received in Belton since August 1st. On average, other applications have taken less than 45 days from application to second read. Today, we are on 63 days. And yes, we did begin the work before council had approved the application. However, the city had made mistakes as well. It wasn't just us. But we will be the ones paying for it. Not the city who didn't advise us that the start date was not feasible at any time during this process. Not the city who, according to their own website, has bi-weekly meetings or needings, can have a meeting as needed. And not the city who assured us that we could start without penalty. And not the city who refuses to grant us the same treatments that others have been, have received, despite-
It's been five minutes.
-the city attorney and city manager stating it was allowed. Thank you.
Any questions? Item E, unfinished business. Number one, motion to approve final reading of Bill 2025-48.
An ordinance approving the 25th amendment to the Old Town Belton redevelopment plan to approve the 406 Main Street project as redevelopment project 2025-02 and to authorize tax abatements as described therein.
Present.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilmember Lawson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Richardson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Yes.
Pryon?
Aye.
McCallum?
Aye.
Mayor Larky?
Aye.
Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item two, motion to approve and final reading of Bill 2025-50.
An ordinance approving the 27th amendment to the Old Town Belton redevelopment plan to approve the 410 Main Street project as the redevelopment project 2025-04 and to authorize tax abatements as described therein.
Present.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Go ahead.
I just want to note on the application for the redevelopment plan, in bold, in the bottom paragraph, it says, "I understand that any scope of work that has been started at the time of this application or during the application review process is ineligible and cannot be included in the total investment amount for tax abatement purposes."
Anybody else?
I'll just say, as one of the participating members of the Old Town Belton Redevelopment Corporation Board, we are meeting tomorrow to kind of review how we have addressed projects where we know the work has started, whether or not people have claimed it's an emergency or not. And our intention is that we don't put the council in a position like this again to have to parse out, or more importantly, put staff in a position to parse out what has started before the application is approved. Ultimately, the nine of us have the final say on if tax abatement is granted. And so, I appreciate Economic Director Mike Ikki calling us together and giving us an opportunity to review and clarify some of these things that have been unclear to folks. Yeah, that's what I'd just say.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
As I said in the last council meeting, I have some concerns, thoughts, feelings, I haven't figured out the word I want to say, about the tone of the emails back and forth suggesting that they had approval, even though the, the application says it is not until the city council approves it. So, I still have that as concern and that's why I voted how I voted last time. And so, I'm just wanting to share those again.
Anybody else? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilmember Pryon?
Aye.
Davidson?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
White?
I'm, we're voting for the amendment?
Yes.
Yes.
Johnson?
Aye.
McCallum?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Mayor Larky?
Yes.
Richardson, I'm sorry, he's absent.
Motion passes. Item three, motion to approve and final reading of Bill 2025-51.
An ordinance approving the 28th amendment to the Old Town Belton redevelopment plan to approve the 401 East Walnut project as redevelopment project 2025-05 and to authorize tax abatements as described therein.
Present.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mayor Larky?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Pryon?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Richardson?
Aye.
McCallum?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Thompson?
Yes.
Davidson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item four, motion to approve and final reading of Bill 2025-52.
An ordinance annexing 11 acres at the northwest corner of East 171st Street and Holmes Road into the city of Belton, Missouri.
Present.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilmember Richardson?
Aye.
Thompson?
Yes.
Pryon?
Aye.
Davidson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
McCallum?
Aye.
Mayor Larky?
Aye. Motion passes. Item five, motion to approve and final reading of Bill 2025-53.
An ordinance approving the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission Service Transportation Block Grant Program Agreement between the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission and the city of Belton, Missouri for the Markey Parkway connection.
Present.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilmember McCallum?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Richardson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Yes.
Pryon?
Aye.
Thompson?
Yes.
White?
Aye.
Mayor Larky?
Aye. Motion passes. F, new business, motion to approve and first reading of Bill 2025-54.
An ordinance amending the city of Belton fiscal year 2026 adopted city budget.
Present.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. You're up.
Good evening, mayor and council. Before you tonight is an ordinance to amend the FY 2026 budget. On September 9th, city council approved a contract with Utility Services Group, Inc., for the purpose of installing water meter infrastructure in a not-to-exceed amount of 8.25 million. So before you tonight is an amendment, and I'm going to kind of walk you through this because I know if you look at the numbers, it probably doesn't add up to you. Okay. So we have expense accounts being amended and we do have a revenue account being amended. So if you look at the table in my council action report that was included in your packet, we do have capital improvement sales tax funds and expense being transferred to Water Fund in 1.76 million. We've got wastewater fund and expense that will actually, we will leave the 3 million in wastewater, but it will be expensed for this project. Water fund, we have revenue coming in from capital improvement of 1.76 million. And then Water Fund already has a million budgeted to spend on AMI. We are going to add 2.49 with that. You're going to take the 2.49 and the 1.76 from capital improvement and we're going to expense that out of Water Fund. Is everyone clear on that?
Any question?
Yeah, just for, sorry.
Go ahead.
Just for viewers at home or anyone sitting out here. So the, the, in the chart, what you're going to see is, is 4.25 and that's what you were just explaining why the 2.4 and the 1.76.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
So just wanted to, I understood what you're saying, but just wanted to make it even more clear.
Yep, that's the additional that will be expensed from Water Fund.
Anybody else?
So, I guess I have further ques, sorry, I didn't realize you were done. I thought I was interrupting you. Um, the, I, I just, two things. One is, thank you for breaking it down in this way because you knew, I probably knew I was going to ask some of these questions anyways, so I appreciate that you got it all out there to begin with. Can you walk through the thought process on where we are pulling the, the money to do this project, what funds we're using and kind of why? Can you walk through that thought process?
Sure. So looking at the cash balances and capital improvement sales tax, which can be used for capital projects, Water Fund and wastewater fund. Wastewater fund has a higher cash balance than Water Fund, which is why I took more out of Water Fund. We do want to leave some, so initially, I thought about taking a little bit more out of capital improvement, but we, we do want to leave some in there for the 60 million in water lines that was approved, I believe in 2019. So I decided not to take any extra out of there and to take it out of wastewater because there is a higher cash balance out of wastewater. So it was just kind of a, a thought process I went through, wanting to leave certain cash balances in those funds at the end of the day. So, that's kind of how I, I came to my conclusion.
No, that, that makes sense. I just, yeah, just wanted that talked out, so thank you.
And then, you'll see that I put the ending cash balance, estimated ending cash balances in all three funds.
I did see that. What's, why I'm not asking about it?
Okay, all right. Any further questions?
Anybody else? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item two, motion to approve and first reading of Bill 2025-55.
An ordinance approving an access agreement between the Port Authority of Kansas City and the Belton Fire Department.
Present.
Second.
A motion and a second. You're up.
Good evening, mayor and council. I've had these before you before. This is a training agreement. The old base area up there by Calvary that the Port Authority of Kansas City now owns, we've used that for years. We've used the building several times for training. Primarily now, we just use the large parking lot for driving training. And so, recently, they had went to annual, we had to re-sign these annual, I presume, because they think they're going to start to develop that. But this is just renewing it. They did kind of put a clause in there, we won't have to come back and do this, it's just, we'll have to vacate it if they give us 30 days' notice. So, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Go ahead.
And by vacate, it's not like we're always there, right? So it just means if they give us 30-day notice, we just got to find training somewhere else?
Yeah, we'd have to take, yeah.
Okay.
And of course, this comes at no cost. It's just a, it's just laying out the liability and what we can and can't do out there.
Anybody else? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item three, motion to approve resolution 2025-072.
A resolution approving a contract for services with SAC Construction LLC for the Influent Infiltration Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Project in the amount of $897,485.
Present.
Second.
Motion and a second. You're up.
So this is our annual contract to do Influent Infiltration contract, which basically prevents stormwater to get into our sanitary sewer system. This is very important because when it does rain, that water, groundwater gets into our sanitary sewer system and ends up at the treatment plant. So our treatment plant, right now, averages about a million gallons per day. When we have a average rain day, it could get up to 2 to 3 million gallons a day. If it's one of those really, really hard rains, we could actually see flows up to 7 million gallons per day. Our plant is rated for 3.5 million gallons per day. And so, sealing our system is important and so we continuously do it. There's a whole bunch of the city that's, part of the city's been sealed, but a lot has not. So this sealing is in three different ways. One is we put CIPP, which is putting liners inside the pipes to fill up all the cracks. It's generally in that clay tile pipe that you see, there's little sections shoved together that begin to leak. The second area is in manholes. The manholes themselves will leak, it's from the joints. And so, we basically put a compound, we shoot it to the outside and the pressure of the ground and water keeps it pressed against the manhole, prevents water from getting in. And then we also put something we call a top hat. It's basically a connection between the sewer main and the service line. So where that comes together, a lot of times, those were done very crudely. A lot of times, a plumber just took a hammer, hit the clay pipes, and just shoved the pipe in, put dirt around it, and just went down the road. And water just leaks into these things all day long. So we seal those three places where we get the most infiltration and stop it, and then it reduces our cost to operate the plant. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Go ahead.
Um, this may be something that you may, I, I, maybe you've got it off the top of your head and I'll just be very impressed, but in terms of, so we just did an I and I project, right? By just, I mean, within the last year and a half. And can we, is there any way we can like track our return on investment? Like, is there like less gallons that are coming, you know, that are coming through because of that?
Absolutely. So, in that last large storm, we saw a dramatic lowering of the amount of water that went to the, to the plant. So sometimes, we'd see up to like 7 million gallons go to the plant. At that last big storm, we only saw about 4 million gallons go to the plant. So there is a big reduction in what's going. The other way we can tell is through, people have backups into their basements. And so, in that last really big storm, we only had one call for a backup, which is way down. You got to realize, some towns, like I have a friend who works in Raytown, and some of the big storms, they have up to 500 calls per storm. We have one or two. And so, we're, we've made a lot of steps forward to, to seal up our system, prevent backflows. We do a lot of camera work, a lot of jetting to keep the lines clear, so we don't have problems. So yes, we do see a shift in it. Now, this is an area that we're trying to prevent, an area where they have backups because of the pipe sizing. The biggest area we have for I and I, we're probably going to start either next year or the year after, which is the area south of this, and it has the most water that was measured going into the system. And it has the most water that was measured going into the system, and so we're gonna make some great headway there, too.
And so, on the big one, seven million, down about three million to four million.
Yeah, it's a, it's a considerable drop, and so, uh, it's hard to tell because, you know, it doesn't rain always the same amount of water.
Sure.
And it's not always at the same speed, and so it's kinda hard to judge things. But they, the plant did say they could see a measurable drop in the amount of water it came down to.
Alright, thanks.
Go ahead.
This is a many-year project, right? This'll take us, and then we'll have to start all over again, or, okay, thanks.
It's basically, and the reason it's start over again, I just want everybody to understand, is that trees don't stop. So as soon as we get everything sealed up, get all the roots, get the whole thing sealed up, uh, tree roots are looking for water. And the place, best place they can find water is in our pipes. And so they just keep pushing and pushing and pushing to try to get through, to break through all the time.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
Just wanted to point out that, to the council and to the public, that our, last year's I and I project was, um, done mostly in West Belton, I believe. And, and we had had our biggest problem with backups, sewer backups during storm events in the West Belton area. And that's where we've seen so much, um, success, that we are no longer having those, those same backups. And so, um, more than just, I mean, yes, and I don't wanna say just and act like it's not a big deal. Yes, it's a big deal that we're taking this water out of our sewer treatment plant and, and, you know, saving wear and tear on that facility. But it's also having a, a direct benefit for residents when we do this I and I, when they aren't getting the backups anymore from, from sewage whenever there's a major storm event.
Anybody else? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item four, motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero seven three.
A resolution authorizing and approving renewal number one of the contract for services with Central Salt LLC for bulk rolled, rolled salt with delivery to purchase fourteen hundred tons of salt for eighty-nine thousand three hundred and seventy-six dollars.
Present.
Second.
Motion is second, and this is way too early.
Well, I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but winter is right around the corner. So this is our annual purchase of salt. Uh, this will refill us, and so we're ready for the beginning of the year. Believe it or not, just here in about two or three weeks, we are gonna be doing our snow training. And, uh, we're already prepping all our equipment right now, making sure everything works and everything's ready to go. Because if you have forgotten, the October surprise, it was just, like, two weeks away from when we got it. And that was, I realized that's in the nineties, but, uh, uh, it could happen again, so we always wanna be prepared.
Any questions? Go ahead. Microphone. Your mic? Hey, hey. Microphone.
I hope you, I hope you get to keep your salt undercover, and you don't have to spread it, even though we've had a standing order for snow.
Yeah, I'd recommend looking at some of the long-range forecasts. Probably not.
Go ahead.
How much do you anticipate, well, how much was left over?
Probably about the same amount. I don't know that number off the top of my head. We used about half of what we had. Uh, last winter wasn't a terrible, terrible winter for salt usage. The other thing we're, we're really good into using is a lot of liquids, and the liquids help us reduce the rock salt usage.
Anybody else?
Is it true that's beet juice?
We do not use beet juice. Beet juice is sugars, and, uh, sugars have, uh, you know, they made a big splash back in the day. But then a lot of people did a lot of analysis of sugars, and they found out that it really doesn't do anything.
Okay. I'm glad we don't use it, then.
Anybody else? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Gee, consent agenda, one motion non-defiable to approve the recommendations noted. Any member of the council may ask for that to be taken from the consent agenda for discussion in separate action.
Present.
Second.
The motion is a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. H, Communication City Council, Councilmember Johnson.
Um, just wanted to report on the Coalition. Um, we're, got some things in the works for the Christmas holiday. Still in the planning stages for that, but we should have that wrapped up and finalized, I hope, in the next couple of weeks. And also wanted to say that part of the, uh, Community Empowerment Grant that the Missouri Main Street Organization awarded to us included some branding and marketing information, and we have received our new branding information from the, the Missouri Main Street Organization, and we're getting ready to implement that. So we're very excited that we're moving forward.
Councilmember McCollum?
Uh, okay, I apologize to everyone sitting up here, but not everyone out there, uh, that I have a lot to go over. It has been a busy two weeks, um, since our last meeting. So the first thing, I would just want to remind everybody that on October second, from four-thirty to six-thirty at Mill Creek, MoDOT will be here hosting a public meeting to discuss the upgrades to the I forty-nine and fifty-eight corridor. Again, I, something I hear about a lot, so just wanna remind everybody that that is taking place. Uh, I wanna give a shout-out to DMSI for a successful fall festival. Main Street looks really good when the community's out enjoying it, um, and it was really great to see that, have the rail running during the event and just, you know, add to that charm. And it just looked, um, like a, like, it was just a good festival, so just wanna, um, shout-out to that. I also, I participated in the Rock the Lake Disc Golf, uh, tournament at Cleveland Lake. The course and our park just looked fantastic, so thank you to the Parks and Rec, uh, crew that had it, uh, up and, and going. We had, uh, two hundred and forty-four players at that tournament, um, and those profits go right back into that course, maintaining that park. So it's really just a great event all around. Um, so thank you for everyone that made that happen. And because I know it's gonna get asked, I'm surprised I didn't already hear a chirp from over that way. Um, I, I was on a four-man team, uh, with our park board member, Adrian Hall. We, uh, we did not win, okay, cuz I know there was, someone was gonna ask that, but we also did not finish last, so.
Chirp, chirp.
And, uh, and I, I had took another opportunity to go for a ride-along, um, with the police department, which is something I would encourage not only council members, but just general public to do, and see what your taxpayers are, tax dollars are getting you. But, um, eh, but anyways, as part of that, I just, uh, wanna give a shout-out, cuz I was, uh, got to hang out with Mr. Sean Myers, and, uh, um, I got a rare tour of our gun range, and even though I was told there was no ulterior motive, it was pointed out to me how, uh, old and dysfunctional our active target system is, so I, I did, uh, I did hear about that. And, uh, and then also, I took some time, um, to attend the Missouri Municipal League, uh, MML Conference in St. Charles. It was a nice opportunity to hear about, you know, best practices, ideas, you know, can potentially apply to Belton. One of the things that I thought was really good that I wanna leave everybody with, um, that was from the, one of the keynote speakers, uh, was that, you know, there's an idea, this idea, we should be looking at putting fun into our projects. And, uh, one of the examples, you know, gave was that no one gets really excited about a pothole getting fixed, even though it's something that has to get done and needs to get done, but you're not gonna hear, uh, people go, "Man, I love Belton cuz they fix this pothole," right? What people want and what they look for is how we can add fun, things like public art, for example, and things like that. So just, uh, would, would like to point out, look for fun in our projects as we move forward. And speaking of, I also, the Parks had another event, Chalk the Walk, um, which was really fun. Added a lot of color to our sidewalks at, um, Memorial Park, and it was just nice to see other people from the community, and some council members out there, too. So, those are all the things I have from the events. Checking in from the TDD Board, we did not meet this month in lieu of a meeting. We actually had, did a ribbon-cutting, um, ceremony in honor of all the work that went into completing the, um, Mullen Road Project. And we, uh, and, you know, and including those that were previously on the board, so that was a nice little ribbon-cutting. And then I do have an update from Parks. The Mom Prom, which is a ladies' night out, that's been going on for, um, three years now, two years anyways. And it's in honor of the, the late Kristen Turnbull. That is, uh, Sunday, October fourth. Uh, the Farmer's Market's still going on. This is the last month for that, um, from four to seven on Thursday. And, um, Pumpkin Palooza is October twenty-fifth at Memorial Park, which is, you know, a trunk-or-treat. And then there's this new thing called Card Mania. Uh, it's a sports card show that will be free to attend. It will be at Memorial Station on October twenty-second. So, um, something to check out if you're interested in sports cards. And that is everything I have.
Do you have a question for him? Go ahead.
I just wanna say, the Fall Fest went really good. Um, the other thing I got, I'd like to do, uh, thirty-one seconds of silence for political violence and the school shootings that have been happening. Thank you.
Um, I was just gonna piggyback, the Chalk the Walk was a really fun event. We have a lot of talented folks in our community, and it was nice to see people out at the park, the vendors. Just a, a fun, free, family-friendly event, which you can't hardly ask for anything better. Um, and then I would also just mention, uh, best wishes to the outgoing Parks Director, Brian Welborn, who submitted his resignation today. Uh, he said he's taken a new role with Jackson County Parks. Our parks have seen fantastic growth in his years leading the department, and I appreciate his leadership and wish him well.
I'd also like to encourage everyone to come out on the second, uh, to talk about I forty-nine. We've all been stuck on there with lake traffic, so now's your time to be heard and to vote for urgent fixing of that road. And I'm looking forward to the mayor's report. They were quite entertaining while you were gone, so thanks for sending me those.
I heard they were. Councilmember Davidson?
I also went to the chalk walk on Saturday, and I have to say, my daughter placed first place. And she also got the pick of the... The tri- yeah, thank you, People's Choice. And, um, so it was fun. Um, second of all, um, Cherry Hill, we got resurfaced, and actually got to see a s- street sweeper going down the street in Cherry Hill. Not sure how that happened, but...
Find one of them, Matt.
I have a picture.
It was the contractors.
And also, I just follow up on a question I asked before. On the audits, how's it going? I mean, people...
We actually just had a meeting yesterday. Um, we are finding past accounts receivable issues. We've gone back to twenty-ten, and, um, I'll be giving a, a full report to Joe. The deeper we dig, the more we find, and, um, but they should have a draft to us very soon.
Thank you.
Councilmember Thompson?
I, um, am excited about the, uh, the empowerment grant and our new branding as a designated, recognized Main Street group from Missouri Main Street. We've got some really cool things coming up. It'll be fun. I went to the Mis- Municipal League, um, event in, uh, St. Charles with Patty and Alex and the mayor, and it was overwhelming the number of times and classes that I went to that talked about public art, and how, how it just kinda infatuates people with your town, that there is public art that they can see. And I was encouraged by that. We also visited some, um, different city halls around us, and the art that they had in their buildings was impressive in some of them, and it was very nice to see. And some of them were from the early eighties that they still had on the wall in their city halls. It was, it was very nice. I learned a lot. We talked about festivals. We talked about, you name it, my brain's still crowded from it. But it was, it was fun. It's worth going to, and, um, we hope to have some conversations with Andrea shortly about some things. I know she's excited.
Councilmember White?
I think I'm gonna pass tonight. I don't have anything.
Alright, uh. I too did attend the Fall Festival before I left and went to the MML Conference. It was, it was a good show. I didn't stay all night, but I did at ten in the morning. Uh, again, to reiterate, uh, the MoDOT meeting on October second, uh, when I was in St. Louis with MML, I actually had to step out and attend a meeting, a planning meeting that I've been on the planning board for. So, I mean, they're excited about it. Uh, they hope a lot of people show up to the meeting on the second. There's a lot to discuss and a lot to look at, so I hope everybody can attend. So it'll be, it'll be a good thing. Uh, we did talk, there's gonna be a lot of moving parts in this product, project. It's gonna, they're estimating a two-year timeframe to get everything done from start to finish, and that includes the fifty-eight bridge, um, widening I forty-nine from one hundred and fifty-fifth street to fifty-eight. And the other project that they've added on to this is north of one hundred and fifty-fifth street, south of one fifty. They're gonna redo those bridges and add a auxiliary lane going south, so that all three projects are gonna be done at the same time. So, but it's gonna take two years to do it, so there's gonna be a lot of moving parts, and a lot of stuff will be closed. So there's gonna be a lot of workarounds and detours, so I hope everybody will be patient so we can get this done. So, that's all I got. City manager?
Mr. Mayor and council, yeah, I have a couple of things. One, yes, the streets project is in its final days. Like, next week or two, it should be wrapping up. Another, they're in the final segment of the community that they, uh, had put on there, uh, on the initial list that we had bet out, and then I think we're gonna try to add a little bit, um, at the end. If we have a little bit of, of funds, a few funds left over, might add a little bit on the end, uh, to try and, um, spruce up that streets project, so it'll be even more than what's even listed. But, um, they're on, like, the last four or five streets that are on the list, um, as far as getting those done. The rest are already completed. And the other thing I wanted to mention is that on October seventh, from four to seven PM, so that would be a week from ten, tonight, um, next Tuesday, uh, Belton PD is hosting a national night out, um, at Price Chopper at the parking lot, so that's four to seven PM on October seventh. And they'll have, uh, local police, fire, and EMS. There'll be free food while supplies last, kids activities for, and drone demonstration, bicycle safety and fire safety, and Bearcat SWAT and Police UTV will be on hand. Um, so anybody wants to go check that out, that's all I've got.
Anybody else for the record? Hearing none. Item K, items for review and discussion. One, open enrollment. You're up.
Okay, mayor and council members, um, I'm here to present information essentially to get you ready for the resolution that's coming October fourteenth. The intent is really just to show you what we've done, uh, so far this year, and why we're gonna potentially be making the changes that we're making to the insurance plans. You should have a copy in front of you, so you can see those images more clearly. Uh, we do have three plans, a high deductible plan, a base PPO, and a buy-up type of plan. And we talked about this last year, but we're trying to keep our expenses within a lower loss ratio. The image that you have on the slide is that essentially insurers wanna stay between sixty to seventy percent for no increase because they have those administrative fees, the sales fees, and things like that. Last year, we were at about eighty-one percent, and year-to-date, right now, we're at about sixty-seven percent. That could change month over month, but we're doing really well, um, collectively. And so when we look at the individual plans, though, the high deductible plan, we have forty-five percent of our employees on that plan, which is about ninety-nine people, and they represent fifteen percent of the total claims. The base plan has forty-three percent of our employees on the plan, and they represent forty percent of the claims. And then you'll see the buy-up plan, which is the EPO plan, we have eleven percent of our staff on that, representing forty-four percent. So I just wanna say that again, eleven percent, twenty-six people, or twenty-six employees, are on this plan, and they are making up forty-four percent of the total claims amount for that. And so on an individual basis, looking at loss ratios at the dollar on the right side, the high deductible plan is running at a twenty-four point six one percent loss ratio. And again, sixty percent, seventy percent's good. It's very low, doing really well. People are managing and being accountable for the, um, expenses they have. On the base plan, sixty percent, so doing very well. Last year, this plan was at a hundred and eleven percent, and so much better this year. Uh, but then when you look at the EPO plan, the one that's representing the eleven percent of employees, the loss ratio is two hundred and forty point eight percent. So for every dollar we're spending out of that, um, that plan... the loss ratio is 240.8%. So for every dollar we're spending out of that, um, that plan, $2.40. And so this is really, um, a lot of the spend that are being responsible, and we want to look at that. So I'm going to jump into some of the other benefits, and then I'll go to the recommendations. Um, we have the renewals this year for medical, dental, vision, and then basic and voluntary life with long-term disability. Um, the medical plan renewal through Aetna came back initially at four and a half percent, which is 161,000, and then they went down to 2%, which is 71,000. Um, that's good. And then with the dental plan, they said zero increase, um, after negotiating from four to two to zero, but they're at zero right now. And then the vision plan as well is a zero increase. So really good news there. With basic and voluntary life and long-term disability, we have USABLE for that, and there's no, uh, designated account representative for us, so we call a generic number. We get generic information. We don't know who we're going to get. That causes some issues. Um, there's not a lot of integration with the current employee benefits portal as well. And so, um, we were going to go ahead and look at that. With the flexible spending account, we have that through basic, and it's not renewing this year, but we went ahead and looked at that because of those same administrative issues, the integration, the account representative, and the billing. So that's what we're looking at this year. And as, again, this is, what I keep going back to is that loss ratio. The orange line is where we should be, and the green line is where we are for each of those plans. So that's what drove the recommendation for the buy-up plan this year. Um, I'm suggesting, and I will, I want your feedback about this, but with the high deductible plan, the base plan, a zero increase. Last year, as a reminder, the base plan at 111% loss ratio had a 10.9% increase, so they got an increase last year. The buy-up plan at 240% had a 20% increase last year. But when we look at the plan costs, um, what I tried to do this year is essentially say we're going to pay the same for the employee-only plan for every single person. And so with the employee-only plan, it's a 47% increase, but that basically says we're paying the same for the buy-up plan per employee that we would pay for the base plan. And that's essentially that right there. Um, again, there are 26 people in this plan, 26 employees in this plan, and then a 10% is what's recommended for the employee, child, employee, spouse, and family plans. That said, when, I'll back up a little bit, when we transition some of those fees to the employees in this plan over a year's time, um, it does take the city's fee or cost, that increased from 71 to 51,000. And so the increase to the city at this point, just from medical, would be 51,000. Questions? So far?
Any questions?
Lot of information.
Any questions?
Yes.
Yeah. Just on a customer service, why are we not having good representation, and why are we not having portals that work and...
So I've been here three years, and it's a company that we've had since I started. It was not a priority at the time, and just over time, we've seen where improvements can be made, so we thought this was the year to do it.
And they're paying attention to you when you say there needs to be improvements made?
Yeah, we, um, our broker, um, took this out to bid. That's actually the next slide, what we're recommending to do.
Okay.
So hopefully that will help.
All right.
Allison.
Um, I just had a question about the monthly rate. So for employee-only, the city covers that full cost, correct?
Correct, for the base plan.
Which would be 191.52?
This is the buy-up plan. This would be, so, um, I'm going to round it. If we pay $900 for the base plan, I want to pay $900 for the buy-up plan. So the 191.52 is how much more this plan would cost than the base.
Gosh, okay, so then that was going to be my next question. The new monthly rate for the buy-up plan for a family is $1,062, and that's after the city's already kicking in roughly $900, and that's the monthly rate?
It's more for the family plan. I was looking at the employee only, but yes.
I mean, you didn't design the health system. None of us did, but this is just...
And I look at this, and I, I feel like it's, um, not right to have employees in the other plans subsidize the employees in this plan. I don't think it's right to do that or to give an increase to everyone, um, or to, um, when we look at the increases, if taxpayers are paying for certain things, then it would go to them. And I feel like some more accountability, we have some options there, which I'll talk about in a second, to make sure that people are accountable for their first dollars or for, um, some of the claims, some which can't be helped and we get that.
Sure. Um, okay, I'll hold on to my thoughts.
Go ahead.
So you started to just touch on this, actually, so that was a good segue. Uh, and maybe this is going to come in a future slide here, but can you talk a little bit about why it might be that there's, that, that, you know, we're at a 240% um, you know, situation with that plan as opposed to the other plans?
If people are unhealthy, they will sometimes choose to be on this plan. Somebody asked me that earlier. I would think that some individuals are used seeing this or used to maybe an HMO plan like in the nineties, and it does pay more. You have less out-of-pocket for hospital stay, um, $750 per day instead of 100% up to your deductible and then 80% until you hit your maximum. So, um, people look at that, and it's easier to budget sometimes this way, uh, but we will be able to help everyone look and see what the cost is for the premium compared to maybe what they could put into an HSA or an FSA to help with those expenses down the road. So...
So some of this is just naturally going to be, somebody gets very, very ill, and it is what it is?
Correct.
But some of this is also potentially controlled by the employee themselves and what they choose to use.
Yeah, we, I, we've heard of people saying, I'm going to have X, Y, or Z done, so I'm going to jump on this plan. So we'll try to help, um, walk through that, because when you have $1,000 compared to something in another plan, can you put the difference, tuck it away for your deductible or for any expense? So there are some educational opportunities that we can absolutely provide this year, too.
Yeah, I mean, don't get me wrong, I agree that it's not great, but, uh, you know, got to make the best of the situation, I guess.
And there are, like I said, 99 people on the ba- on the high deductible plan and 96 employees on the base plan. So... Any other questions before I move on to the other benefits? Okay, so with the voluntary life insurance, um, we did have, again, USABLE, and we are recommending moving to the standard. And with that, the life insurance plus the long-term disability is a $27,000 savings per year with a three-year rate guarantee, so over a three-year period, it's $83,000. Um, with the flexible spending account, the recommendation would be to go to Surenci. Um, the savings, I wrote it up there even though, it's $353 a year, but again, uh, there's a four-year rate guarantee. It's $1,000. You add that to the zero increase that we've fought for for dental insurance, it's, um, $100,000 over a three-year period, um, which could compound. So that would be the recommendation to that. Um, the long-term disability, life, and FSA, for those, um, products, we would have the better billing, the designated account representative, which we've already met, um, and different connectivity with the online benefits portal. So several improvements made if we make this movement.
Oh, go ahead.
Um, is there, what's, is there any difference in the plans between the, when your cost savings is 27,000?
No.
Same? Okay.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
All right. So some of the things we're going to work on to make sure that we can continue down a healthy path are some wellness initiatives that we have, um, as well as focusing on wellness. We know that our top claims are hyperlipidemia, hypertension, um, obesity claims, diabetes, and so we want to focus on those specific things so we can work on physical health. Mental health was one, um, being a good consumer of healthcare and trying to explain where people can go to save money if they use their plan correctly, um, one vendor versus another. Um, and then some preventative wellness, making sure people are going to the doctor in time, making sure that they plan ahead for those kinds of things. So we'll look at that. We did look at self-funded this year, um, but probably not an option with the claims and the risk tolerance that we have, but we'll continue to look at that over time as we make improvements. So this is the good news. That's why I talked really fast, because it wasn't a huge thing. Uh, but the medical, medical increase, 51,000 minus the 27, 28 for life, is, um, a projected increase for the calendar year for $23,000. Last year's budget was over $300,000 increase it for comparison, so just wanted to point that out. Any other questions?
Any more questions?
You're welcome. You asked.
Thank you.
Allison, did you have anything? I can see the brain. Yeah.
Um, okay, so this is the organizational impact, which, great numbers, love that. Um, going back to renewal recommendations with the, uh, that one, yeah. So this is for the EPO, is that right?
Correct, correct.
So for the high deductible plan, no increase, uh, employee paychecks will stay...
Correct.
Deductions will stay the same. Base plan, no increase. Okay, buy-up plan.
No increase to dental, no increase to vision, no increase to the high deductible or the base.
Gotcha, okay. Um, when I look at this compared to the benefits of the EPO, I mean, I under- and if I was planning a, anticipating an expensive year of medical, I would pick the EPO, too. You know what I mean? Because it's not remarkably cheaper in terms of out-of-pocket max, and I understand that 750 a day for the first five days in the hospital may end up being better than 80% after deductible, but just like, this is not your problem to solve. I guess I'm just kind of lamenting the fact that...
Well, and we'll look at it, because if you're paying $300 more a month for 12 months, it's $3,600. Your in-network maximum is $5,500, but the in-network maximum under the high deductible plan is only 3,400. So when you look at that, you know, you have to make the decision for yourself. We cannot legally actually recommend that any employee do anything, but we can at least point some of these things out to them to look at so they can make the best decision for themselves and completely understand if they want to do that. We just want to be able to put paper to pen and share with them what the cost is actually going to be to them on a monthly basis and when claims happen.
Sure. Um, so then one other question about in-network, out-of-network. Um, with the provider we're going with, which local health systems are in-network? Do you know?
It's Aetna's. Um, it's the same as last year, and I would have to look those up.
Okay.
But it's the same network that we've had.
All right. I, I appreciate how you approach this and all the info you share with us. It's really helpful. It's also just something that would make me hit my head against a wall every day, so thank you for doing it for folks.
Yeah, I love it, but I've been told to cut it short, so, uh, because I know everybody else doesn't, so if you have any questions, just let me know, okay?
Anybody else? Thank you. Item two, EMS billing. I think that was self-imposed shortness.
I just wanted to make you guys aware of a project we've been working on that I hope to have a resolution to you in the next meeting or two concerning our third-party billing company for our EMS billing. We currently use a company called Digitech. I'm not unhappy with them. We think that they do a good job, and we've been using them now for about seven or seven and a half years. We just thought that it would be good, uh, for us to go out and make sure that we're still getting the best deal. Um, so we have engaged with them to have them take a look at that. We've engaged with another company that we've talked to several times, um, who actually has a cooperative bid, so it made this whole thing easier, talking to who we're using now, plus somebody that has a cooperative bid. Um, and so I don't have a lot of details yet. We're still waiting on some of that to go, to come back. Um, the city attorney has the agreement from the new company if we happen to, to choose them, so he can start vetting that. Right now, the numbers do look like that it'd be favorable to switch, and they have a, they have a few things. They, they, they will offer us a cheaper rate for, uh, so far their offer is the cheapest rate for collections, so we would be gaining a half a percent or so on our collections instead of them keeping it. But they're also willing to wrap in our, uh, software that we use for reporting, which currently, this year, cost us about 16,000. We've been looking at some extra components that we want to put to, uh, to it to help us extract more data. Um, so both, that would be a public forward-facing, uh, piece of information, but that new addition's going to cost us closer to 30,000, but they're, the company's willing to wrap that price into, um, the billing, uh, agreement that they're already giving us, so we'd be saving that much, nearly 30,000 in a line item, plus gaining more back on our billing. Um, so we're still giving our current company a chance to take a look at that. They haven't gotten back with us on a bid, but either way, I'm hoping to have something, either the adjustment to the current agreement or, uh, a new agreement to you guys in the next couple meetings. I'm happy to answer any of your questions.
Go ahead.
Is that an, is that a year?
Typically, the one that we currently have is just an auto-renewing, and I, uh, I don't remember on the, on the company we're looking at, but I think it's just an auto-renewing until one or the other says that they want to quit.
With automatic increases?
No, no, it's, it's a locked-in price. So basically, what happens is they take care of all of our billing. They'd, uh, they do some of the, well, actually, the, the other thing that this new company could offer us as well is bringing, um, our initial billing plus our collections under one roof, so that we're not using two different companies. Um, and so they send the invoices, they call them a few times, and then it rolls over to, um, collections, but that, uh, the percentage that they keep out of the billing stays consistent through the entire agreement.
Anybody else?
I didn't, but I just wanted to follow up on that. It made, got me, I'm assuming the reason there isn't an increase is because they do it based on our business, right? So if our business suddenly got a lot more busier, they would see more money because they get that certain percentage.
Yeah, it's a percentage of the collections that they get, and so, yeah, and we always see, I mean, we, we've been on a steady incline of calls, so that's always going to mean us, you know, an increase in revenue.
And people want to work with us because of that, so...
With that, are you guys done? With that, is it time to look at amount, the amount we bill?
Possibly. I mean, we, uh, we did change the mileage last year. Um, I haven't done a comparison around us. There, there is one thing that's a little bit different about us than there are many of our, um, it's not really competitors, but many of our, uh, you know, neighboring departments, especially the districts, they actually don't, uh, they don't collect as aggressively as we do. They basically, uh, South Metro to our east and, uh, West Peculiar to our south, basically they send an initial bill and they take only what insurance pays and they write the rest off. And so we, we don't do that. We still hold them, hold them accountable for the rest of it, and anybody, you know, has had to use an ambulance, typically you're only looking at about $500 coverage by your insurance, and so it leaves a little bit left on your plate, too. But we could take a look at that and do some comparisons around us.
Might as well, since, want to swi- if we switch. Anybody else? All right. Hearing none. Item L, motion entered executive session, discuss matters pertaining to leasing, purchase, or sell of real estate according to Missouri State Statute 610.021.2% and negotiated contracts according to Missouri Statute, State Statute 610.021.2. It's regularly closing immediately adjourned from there. Present.
Second.
Motion to the second. Roll call.
Councilmember Richardson?
Aye.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor Larky?
Yes.
Davidson?
Yes.
Pryon?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
McCallum?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion passes for adjourn.